Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation following.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Alan?
Here.
Green?
Here.
LaFleur?
Here.
Ms. Stravich?
Here.
Reindell?
Here.
Ricks?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Good to see everybody here tonight. Approval of minutes for the city council meeting of August 19th. Motion to approve would be in order.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Audience comments on any non-agenda items? Now would be the time. I believe everybody here is on the agenda, except for her.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening about the upcoming bond proposal in Richmond Community Schools. My name is Rachel Churchill. I'm a fifth grade teacher in Richmond Community Schools, but I'm before you tonight also as a resident of the city of Richmond and my children attend the schools as well. To address a variety of facility needs, the Richmond Board of Education has placed a $38.71 million bond proposal on the November 5th ballot. If approved by our voters, the tax rate is projected to increase 1.45 mils, or about forty cents per day for the average Richmond homeowner. Some homeowners will pay more, but most will pay less than those forty cents. If orders approve the bond proposal, we plan to invest the bond revenue in four general areas. One, student safety enhancement, things like a secure entrance at Richmond Middle School, which we do not have currently, updated fire alarm systems, etc. Two, facility updates, this is much-needed roof repairs, new parking lots that would benefit our whole community in the events that we hold at our schools, upgrading electrical, our HVAC systems, as well as other general facility updates, you know, flooring, that type of thing. Number three, we would improve the learning environment at all of our school facilities. And four, and only 10% of the bond would be improving and updating school athletic facilities. And as you know, and you've recognized many of our sports teams, our sports are very successful and this would help to continue that success. Every project in the bond proposal has been reviewed and approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury. The last bond proposal was approved by our voters in 2013. We completed all of the projects on time and under budget. Now, though, we need to take the next step to keep our schools safe, secure, and up to date. More families are choosing to move into the Richmond area and are enrolling their children in the Richmond Community Schools. That's good for our schools and the communities we serve, including the city of Richmond. Property values for our residents improve when the communities are desirable and the schools play a big part in this. Our enrollment is expected to increase by over 100 students in the next five years. In fact, to accommodate current and projected student enrollment increases at the elementary level, we need to add additional classrooms to support our early childhood and preschool programs, as well as K-3 programs at Willa Lee Elementary. The fact card, and I did put one at each of your seats tonight, has additional information about the bond proposal. Our website address appears on the back of the fact card. That's where you'll find complete details about the bond proposal. As a resident, I hope that our city council members will learn about the bond and I hope that you will support us in this endeavor. Thank you for your time tonight and your support and I think we all agree that if we can build a great community, when we all can work together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kyle Simmons, resident of Richmond here, also here on the bond. To just follow up on what Rachel said, it is very extensive. I'm just asking that voters, please go to the Richmond Community Schools website and see everything that is entailed in the scope of this bond. Rachel highlighted many things, but there are many more things included in this bond. And I hope that people will choose, you know, forty cents a day is a couple cups of coffee a week. And I know that my wife and I are going to make the investment and vote yes for our kids on November 5th. And I think if you look at the scope of the bond, you will hopefully see that the rate of return on that forty cents a day is fantastic. I believe it is. So I'm asking everyone just to educate yourself, voters, educate yourself, go to the site, see everything that's included, because I promise you, there are things that touch every kid in the district, from preschool up to seniors and high school. There is something in this bond that will affect all of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Sarah Gillis, speaking on behalf, I'm a resident of the city of Richmond and I've got two kids in Richmond Community Schools, also on the bond proposal. So just wanted to say, my daughter is in fourth grade this year, so she was part of the first class to be moved to the middle school because we were out of space at the elementary school. It's a great problem to have. It was a very difficult, kind of emotional decision to make, to, you know, have her go to the middle school at nine years old, but she loved it. She's doing great. They have a great setup for the fourth graders over there and their own little wing at the middle school. But we do need space at the elementary school with the projected development that's going in by Woodside. I think there's gonna potentially be a lot of families that are coming to Richmond and we have to have space for these kids. So the bond proposal would address space with some additions at the elementary school. I think it's much needed because we have a lot of little people. The early childhood education program is growing so much. I believe it was a 300% increase in, I can't remember how many years, but a short amount of time. It's growing so much in this town. I think that, again, it's a good problem to have, but I think we need the space. So I am in support of the bond. We will be voting yes for my household. Also, the safety at the middle school, I think, is essential. Obviously, I just started going to the middle school with my daughter starting today, but it's not secure right now. I think they do, yeah, you too, I think they do a great job ensuring the safety, but I think having a secure vest to be able to walk into the entrance of the middle school is also essential in this day and age. So we will be in support of the bond, so I just wanted to get the word out there. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Brian Wombs, Superintendent for Richmond Community Schools. Almost five years to the day, I was here in front of city council, but at your other place, the old city hall, and I talked to you about what makes a great community. And it was about the strong dynamics of a city government, a strong school system, and a strong religious arm. And Richmond, in my five years of being here, is clearly has that. The government obviously supports its residents and does everything that it can within its fiscal abilities to do that. In five years, as Mrs. Gillis said, we have increased enrollment. We are closing the gap in our enrollment from the number of students that are graduating to the number of students that are entering our kindergarten. Tonight, I welcome the class of 2033 and 2034 to Blue Devils Night, our preschool program, which has had a 300% increase. We have added classrooms. We are closing the achievement gap. For the first time in almost probably 20 years, we've added a fifth section of kindergarten and a fifth section of first grade, which is a lot of students when you look at the numbers. I am proud that our board has made some fiscally tough decisions, but they did it without cutting programs and services for kids. In fact, we've been very creative in how we partner with not only the city, but also our EMS and so forth with some of the programs that we offer. For the second year in our role, our expenses equal our revenue. We are not dipping into our fund balance. Some of the things for you to know about your school system, just recently in Niche Magazine, which ranks the 2020 best schools, they rank schools across the nation, Richmond Community Schools was named the number one safest district in Macomb County. We are in the top five for the best school districts and having the best teachers. We are in the top 10 for the best places to teach and athletic program. These are looking not only at our statistics, but also parent and student feedbacks. Recently, we were named academic state championships for the size of our school district for having the most student growth by the time students enter our district and where they leave out of any district our size in the state. And probably one of the things that we're most proud of collectively is our graduating class this year, the class of 2020, has exceeded state, county, and national averages on the SAT by in some cases 40 points. That is remarkable. So the bond that's being proposed is to help continue this momentum. There's a lot of excitement in this community and we want to continue growing it, so I thank you for your support.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the council? We will move on. Doctrine of agenda, Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
City Council, any changes? Motion to accept the agenda as presented, it be in order?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. Any discussion? Be in that, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have the motion for the consent agenda.
Make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. There's no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have no public hearing this evening. We move on to items for consideration, which we have seven. The first one being consideration of the purchase of road salt for the fiscal year 1920 winter season. Hate to even think about this. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, sorry to put this on the agenda, but the city of Richmond currently participates in the My Deal Road Salt Purchase Program through the state of Michigan. My Deal is an extended purchase program, which allows local units of the government to buy through the state contract. Under the My Deal program, the city's required to take a minimum of 80% and up to 120% of the amount requested. The city's cost for salt this season will be $50.94 a ton, up from $47.61 last year.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
Make the motion to authorize the expenditure of up to $42,789.60 from Detroit Salt for the purchase of road salt for fiscal year 1920 winter season with the expense charged appropriate line item.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Hopefully, we don't need that much this year. But if we do, we have some new, we have a new truck and...
New place to put it.
Yeah, new place to put it. Yeah, we're ready, right?
Yeah.
Very good.
Still less than 2014, it was $77.15.
Yeah. Yeah. Quite a bit from that time. That was gold salt back in those days. Any other comments? Any audience comments on this item? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number two is consideration of fire hall and wastewater treatment plant light LED retrofits. Mr. City Manager?
The current budget includes $26,875 for the replacement of fluorescent fixtures with LED fixtures at the wastewater treatment plant and fire hall. The fire hall is being funded through the Tifa fund. They took care of their motion last Wednesday. The wastewater treatment plant is obviously coming out of that budget and fund, so it's before you tonight.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to authorize the expense of $8,195 for the purchase of a two-by-two and two-by-four retrofit kits from Ray Electric with the expenses charged, the appropriate line items, Tifa, and wastewater treatment plant equipment replacement funds.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. Is there any discussion on this one?
Just one that, it's shocking that the library project showed a 37% reduction in electrical usage. I mean, that's, it would be silly not to do something like this.
That's why we're investing, you know, long-term. We're gonna save some money here. Any other comments? Any audience comments on this item? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number three is consideration of request to close M-19 to conduct the annual homecoming parade. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider the request we received from the Richmond High School for permission to conduct the annual homecoming parade. This year, the parade is scheduled for Friday, September 27th, 2019, beginning at 5:00 p.m.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the request from the Richmond High School to conduct the annual homecoming parade and direct the city clerk to apply to MDOT for permission to close M-19 from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Friday, September 27th, to conduct the annual homecoming parade.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. Any discussion on this item?
Requesting no rain.
For me?
I'm requesting no rain this year.
Maybe I have to talk to a higher authority.
Right.
Any other comments? Any audience comments on this item? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number four, consideration of special event request, Wild Lotus Yoga Studio 5K Run-Walk. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a special event request from the Wild Lotus Yoga Studio for a 5K Run-Walk to be held on Saturday, October 5th, in the Trailhead Park and Macomb Orchard Trail. Jill Konwinski, co-owner of the yoga studio, is coordinating the race, or the 5K and run and walk. She's also, in the past, held an event on the trail and worked with the city for Habitat for Humanity, Brush for the Brush, or something, so she kind of knows how the city handles the Trailhead Park and the Trail Commission, so this is before you tonight.
Very good. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the special event application from Wild Lotus Yoga Studio for a 5K Run-Walk and allow organizers to utilize the Trailhead Park and Macomb Orchard Trail from 2:30 p.m. until 4:00 p.m. on Saturday, October 5th, 2019.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. Is there any discussion on this item? Nice to add another item to our annual events. Hopefully, this will continue to be something that's successful for them. Any audience comments on this item? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Does pass. We have the consideration of the special event request, Richmond Lions Club for the Goodfellow Paper Sale. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a request received from the Richmond Lions Club to conduct their annual Goodfellow Paper Sale on Friday, December 6th, and Saturday, December 7th. The Lions Club is requesting permission to conduct the sale at the intersections of Main and Division and County Line and Sinclair Highway. Administration is just recommending that on the Friday, the club not solicit in the intersection of Main and Division from 2:30 to 3:30 to accommodate the school traffic.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the request received from the Richmond Lions Club to conduct their Goodfellow Paper Sale at the intersections of Main and Division and County Line Sinclair Highways on Friday, December 6th, and Saturday, December 7th, 2019. Further, the Lions Club agreed not to be in Main and Division intersection on Friday, December 6th, from 2:30 to 3:30, and further, the Lions agreed to sign a liability waiver.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. Is there any discussion on this item? Thing they've done for a number of years. Any audience comments on this? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number six is consideration of special event request from the Richmond Moose Lodge for the fundraiser. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a special event request from the Richmond Moose Lodge and Michigan Dressers Motorcycle Club to conduct their 32nd Annual Toy Run for Kids on Grand Trunk between Main and Howard on Sunday, October 6th, 2019. The ride will begin and end on Grand Trunk and the motorcycle club will also be utilizing the Richmond Moose Lodge for the event. They are requesting the Grand Trunk be closed from 10:30 to 4:00 p.m. to accommodate the run, depending on how many people are at the event and how many stay. The duration, they may be able to open the road a little bit earlier. And I believe Daryl Sloan is here tonight if you have any questions from Michigan Dressers.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion before discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special event request from Richmond Moose Lodge and Michigan Dressers Motorcycle Club to conduct their 32nd Annual Toy Run for Kids, including the closure of Grand Trunk Avenue from 10:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Sunday, October 6th, 2019.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. Would you like to add anything that the city manager had to say?
No, you did a fabulous job, thank you. My name's Daryl Sloan. I'm in Michigan Dresser Motorcycle Club. We've been in existence since 1974. For the last 17 years, we've been at Fraser VFW Hall. We're a family-oriented motorcycle club. We do this every year. We raise money for a special family. The Moose Lodge is gonna be our home for a while. We're not a motorcycle that has our own clubhouse. We don't need all that because we're a family-oriented motorcycle club. So we plan on being in Richmond for a long time. I've been cheering this toy run myself for the last three years, but just real quick, five years ago, Fraser Cop's daughter had leukemia. He was off work. We raised money for his family. Since Fraser was our home, we raised almost $6,000 for his family in that one day. With that being said, and staying in Richmond's gonna be our home for a long time, next year, we do want to pick a Richmond family that has special needs for their child to raise money for that family. And we would like to host the Richmond get involved. With your request, I'd like to give each of you a flyer to our event and I ask all you guys to come out and see who we are. Is there gonna be other biker clubs, biker clubs there? Yeah, there is. But it's gonna be a mild, fun, exciting day, so I encourage all you to come, show up, meet us, see who we are, since Richmond is our new home and we're gonna be here a while.
Okay, Daryl, I got a few questions.
Sure.
And I think it's answered. We do have this part of the flyer.
That's it.
Okay.
You guys all have it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we all have it. So it's not members only?
It's not members only.
Okay.
Public, we encourage to host the Richmond to come out to see what we are all about. If there's a Richmond family out there, that they can listen to us on your channel right now, if you guys know someone that needs help next year with special needs for family, please let me know. City Manager, I think you have my number. Please contact me, because we start this for next year, in the next two months, well, a month, two months after October, we're gonna start planning for next year. And we would love to have a Richmond family.
How many bikes are you expecting?
Well, this is our first year here in Richmond. We're a little further north. It's hard to say. I'm hoping at least 100.
Okay.
In the past, there's been anywhere from 100 to 200.
Okay.
But it's always been in Fraser. Depends on the weather.
Oh, you said a parade, so do you plan on everybody taking off at the same time?
Yes.
Okay.
So the parade means it's just a short 15-minute ride. I have what we're doing, you know, our route, it basically stays in Richmond. It's probably, like I said, 15, 20-minute ride.
Okay. So given that, I'm wondering if we shouldn't have the police department to block...
Like Main Street, to get them out on the main.
Yeah, get them out on.
Were you intending to go to school section?
Yes, we're leaving Howard Street, coming out, making a right to Howard, going to M-19.
Yeah.
Going somewhere to school section, and then school section back to M-19, back to Grand Trunk.
You know, and I've been on many rides myself and I know how it's done, but that's not what we want to do. We would rather have our police department blocking the main.
We would appreciate that and after the meeting, after I found out what was going on, I was gonna go talk to the police station.
Yeah.
But with your help, yeah, that would be even better for us.
Yeah, contact the city manager, but council, would you think that we should have the police department blocking the main?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, the intersections.
Yeah.
Coming out on to main, maybe 32 in main. Yep.
Because not only what happens is, and it's not just the dressers, but on most rides, what will happen is there's, there's people will come up on their bikes and block the roads.
Right.
So that cars don't go through, but I've been on rides where people in cars don't particularly care to stop.
Yeah.
So we want to make it safe.
Dan, he's a member of the Moose Lodge, he's one of the big shots over there. He's been talking with Macomb County Sheriff. And we're trying... Oh, we were denied? Okay, forget it.
So anyhow, within the city limits, we'd like to tell the city manager what you guys are gonna be doing, approximately what time it's gonna happen, and the council wants us to make it safe.
Absolutely, I agree, and I appreciate that. I mean, you know, it's tough out there on a bike.
Yeah, it is.
And Mr. Mayor, would we, do they stay together as a group and then come back, so we need to receive them then again?
Possibly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because if they're making a left-hand turn, then...
If it's that short of a run, possibly, we just move our police over to another, you know, however, that's something that you can work out logistically, hopefully, but yeah, we'd like to lend our support to the run. And we love the idea that you're here.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Dressers have a very good reputation for many, many years in Michigan.
Yeah, we're happy to be in Richmond. This is, like I said, this is probably our last home.
Yeah, yeah, we hope so.
As long as Dan stays at the Moose Lodge.
If need be, in the township, just to assist with traffic for their safety, just to keep everybody together, I'm sure we can get the fire department, as long as it's staying fairly local.
Very good.
Fire department will...
I think you picked a good community to come to and it's gonna support you.
I live in New Baltimore, so I smell a lot of time in Richmond. You know, it's right down the street and...
Yep.
I love Richmond. I always have.
No, we need you to move here.
Trying to convince the wife to move here, you know, so it's up to her.
We got good schools, great schools. They're gonna be even better after November.
Absolutely. That's, that's good to hear that stuff, too.
Yes, it is.
It's very good to hear that.
All right, any other questions of Daryl while we got him up there? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it, guys.
Absolutely. Any other?
Any other comments?
Discussion? Mr. Mayor?
Don't wait for you here.
Can you go up to the, that way people can hear you at home.
I just wanted to answer the question about the membership and the being open to the public. We've applied to our international organization to have it open to the public. It's been granted. We've paid for the insurance. So other than on the motorcycle, which would be a homehold harmless, of course, but anything that is in our event is covered by our new insurance that we just got, which is another million-dollar policy to cover non-members. So as far as the membership goes, it's open to the public.
Great. Excellent. Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion here?
Anything else from the audience? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Good luck. Hopefully, you got the weather. Our last item is item number seven, consideration of special event request, Richmond Band Boosters for the banner request. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a request from the Richmond Band Boosters to have a banner across Main Street and temporary signage that would advertise and direct people to their 6th Annual Pumpkin Craft and Vendor Sale, which is scheduled to be held on the weekend of October 5th and 6th. As you may recall from last year, this is the one event where the two banner requests, the one from the band boosters and the one from the rags for their cemetery walk, kind of overlap a little bit on the two weeks that they would normally be allowed, so we kind of push the band boosters a little bit forward and then kind of shorten the rags, and we're doing that again this year. the rags. And we're doing that again this year. As you may know and from the weekly update, we are working on that second set of banner sets that would be near the fire hall that would allow two banners to be up at the same time.
Very good. All right, we need a motion to approve the application. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the special event application for the Richmond Band Boosters for a crossroad banner from September 19 through October 2, in conjunction with their annual pumpkin craft and vendor sale on the 5th and 6th of October.
Support.
It's been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Any audience comments? Back to the table. We did it last year. We'll do it again. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We also need a motion for the temporary signage. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special event application from Richmond Band Boosters for temporary signage in conjunction with their annual pumpkin craft and vendor sale October 5 and 6. The signs placed at city limit signs will be allowed beginning Friday, September 20.
Support. It's been made and supported. Any discussion on this item? Any audience comments on this item? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. City Manager's comment, sir?
Just good luck this week to the festival.
Okay, move on to council comments. Rob?
No, I have nothing.
John?
Nothing.
Emily?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Jamie?
Nothing, sir.
Dennis?
I just wanted to thank the school members for coming out and presenting their school bond. And hopefully, everybody at this board will find a way to support the bond and move it forward, so.
Very good. Mike?
I concur.
Very good. I think on the item of the, of the bond, how important it is to our community, I know that the, the, I believe the superintendent is going to have a focus show. Am I correct?
Yes.
On our local channel six, to get more into the, into the bond and what it really means for the community. So hopefully, that happens soon.
Yes.
And really take, we need to take that time. I would venture to say I would like to see this on a city council meeting. I would like to see how many city councilmen will be willing to tell our community how important this is to the community. And so I'm going to request that our next meeting, we have this on the agenda to discuss a little further, and hopefully, we can take the time for something as important as all the things that we do all year long. This is probably one of the most important things that we need to completely understand so that when we do talk to people in the community, we can say yea or say nay. That's, that's what we do. In talking, the majority of, or some of our councilmen, I see they're behind this bond, and it can only help the city, is the general feeling so far. I have not polled every one of you, as you all know. I haven't polled every one of you. But I think it's very important that we get behind this. I think it's very important the entire community gets behind us because it's only going to make our community that much better. So whether that's right or wrong, this isn't about politics. This is about what is good for our community. And I, for one, feel that it is extremely important that this bond passes, and we bring our schools up as high as we can raise them for our children. And I also believe, one thing that hasn't been mentioned, is some of the things that are on this bond, not only is going to help the children, but it's going to help the community. There's things here that are going to be done that will make it easier for my grandchildren and friends of mine who don't go to school to utilize some of the facilities. And that's extremely important for the cost. The retiring of bond is not going to cost us near as much as, you know, it would if we wait longer. It's only going to cost us more. So I'd like to put this on the agenda. I'm going to request the, when the City Manager and I go over the next agenda, I'd like to have that on there. And meanwhile, I would like to get some more information on this so the city council can have that type of information available to them. And actually, it wouldn't be the, the, well, yes, it would be the 20th, the 16th, two weeks from yesterday. So given that, and then, you know, same thing, the community, John, your administration, again, the employees, Jim, that you have, everybody has been so helpful in putting this good, good old days together. It, again, was a fantastic achievement to get to where we were today.
So far.
And it took everybody to get us there. The thing has just gotten to be a giant, and it just, it's, there's so many of the details and whatnot. It's just been, it's become so complicated to keep it all under control. And, you know, thank God I got two board members sitting right next to me, and other, just about everybody here is involved one way or the other, because it is a good thing for our community. And again, your administration has helped so much.
Thank you.
Again, amazing. And I know what kind of job a lot of our employees are going to do, and the long hours they're going to be working over the, over the weekend. So we, we from the Good Old Days Festival certainly appreciate that. And appreciate all of our sponsors and businesses and the people of our community that put up with some of the negative that goes along with bringing in this many people into our small town. So I'm hoping for a great time for everybody. We go to the calendar this evening. We did have a mistake. The trash will be picked up tomorrow on the 4th. The library board will meet at 7 o'clock on the 9th at the library. The planning commission will be meeting on the 12th at 7 o'clock right here at city hall. And our next regular city council meeting, as I mentioned, will be on the 16th at 7 o'clock right here at city hall. I want to remind you, on the 28th, it's a Saturday, the Lois Wagner Memorial Library will be having their Jigsaw Puzzle Sale from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And they've got puzzles for all ages, and I know they've been having a lot of puzzle contests over there. I think it's gotten pretty, pretty rough over there. Somebody said the police department might have to go to the next one. Anyhow, they have a great time over there, and they're having that sales fundraiser for the library. Is there anything else that we need to add to the calendar right now? No? Okay. We move on. We have no closed session this evening. Is there any other business of the city council? Be it not, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thanks for being with us. Okay, we need a motion to reconvene into open session.
So moved.
Support.
It's been made and supported. Any discussion? Be it not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. We're back into open session. We move on to other business. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the time agreement with POAM Patrol Officer signed July 29, 2019.
Support.
It's been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Appreciate the administration's work on this, and also our employees in the police department working out a good contract. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have one more motion for the department directors and non-affiliated personnel. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2.5% raise for the department directors and non-affiliated personnel working more than 20 hours per week annually.
Support.
It's been made and supported. Any discussion on this item? Again, we appreciate all the work done by the administration and the employees. Another good contract. Anything else? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Motion to adjourn would be in order.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
It's been made and supported. There is no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thanks for being with us tonight.